I would like to call the city council meeting for July 25th, 2018 to order. At this time for our moment of silence, just as a point, I just wanted to, we've been in midst of our summit process. We've been reaching out to not only young people, but families and providers and so forth throughout the community. We're looking to get feedback as to how do we deal with some of the challenges that we have with juvenile crime? And it's, I think, our philosophy as a whole, that we don't go into a neighborhood and say, "We know what you're going through, we're here to fix it." We go into the neighborhood and ask them, "What are you facing and what are the challenges you've been facing?" I have had the opportunity to meet, pushing over to 400 people since we started this process. In the last two days, I've had some really challenged kids, some incarcerated, some in some real challenging programs. And as much as we want the problems, we all want the problem solved, these are kids that are hurting. They're, they're striking out, I realize, and we all realize that, and we don't want it to continue, we gotta provide safety for our community. But we hear that the complicated problems that they undertake are really, in some case, monumental for them, and the fact that they have even survived. So, let's think about the things we need to do to make our community safe, make sure all kids have an opportunity to have hope and opportunity for them, but also, let's get to the real thinking process that we gotta go beyond those people comments and get to the heart of what this issue is. So with that, please, a moment of silence. Alderman Tompkins, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Matson?
Grip?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Clul?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Nine present, your honor.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to thank and welcome all of those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on the television or by way of the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make our city, Davenport, an even greater place for all of our citizens, and for the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the discussion agenda tonight, you are encouraged to do so at that time during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You will be asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, thank you for being here. First of all, will, and Alderman, move the approval of the minutes for the council meeting from July 11th? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, those are approved. Do we have a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing for now, your honor.
Thank you, thank you very much. Will, and Alderman, move the approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for July 18th, 2018? Again, that's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Our next item, there are several, a couple appointments for this evening. Under our housing commission, we have Ruby Mateos is a reappointment, and Gary Sashich is a new appointment. Is there a motion to approve those two appointments?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, and thank you to the two of you for your continuing service or your new service to these important commissions, this particular commission. There's one presentation this evening, and that is from the Iowa Water Environmental Association, the IAWEA, and the awards. So, representative, would come on up, please.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, citizens of Davenport, everybody watching. My name is John Cook, I'm the, just live down the river in Muscatine, I'm the director of the water pollution control plant there. But I'm here officially this evening as the current president of Iowaea, the Iowa Water Environment Association. Iowaea is a state member to the International Water Environment Federation, or WEF, a not-for-profit association, provides technical education and training to tens of thousands of water quality professionals. Iowaea and WEF members have proudly protected public health, served in local communities, and supported clean water worldwide since 1928. As a matter of fact, Iowa proudly serves as the first official wastewater organization to train wastewater operators from 1915. Each year at the annual Iowaea meeting, individuals may be inducted into the Golden Manhole Society in recognition of their significant commitment and contribution to collection system operations and maintenance activities. This year, I am pleased to induct Dan Myers and the city of Davenport into the Iowaea Golden Manhole Society. Over Dan's 29 years of service to four communities in Iowa, Dan has experienced wide sweeping changes in collection systems, from advanced controls, GPS, data collection, all manner of things. He has also used these technologies and seen the change and prioritizing the need to maintain a sustainable collection system that will continue to serve the citizens reliably for decades to come. In 2015, Dan was hired as the city of Davenport Water Pollution Control Plant Manager, where he has been challenged to run one of the largest wastewater treatment plants in the state of Iowa. His long 29-year history, Dan, you must've got your first job at 12, is that right? You're not old enough to have that. 29 years, congratulations, very good. In his 29-year history in the water and wastewater industry, made him an excellent candidate for your city's challenging needs. Dan has successfully managed large-scale improvement projects, such as a digester tank cleanout, nutrient reduction strategy, gray water reuse plans, wet weather optimization project for the city's plant. All of these projects have been in support of achieving the DNR consent order for which the city has been receiving extremely positive feedback. Since Dan has taken over the lead of the facility, the level of transparency, fund use, and communications with city stakeholders has markedly improved. Dan has coordinated with four municipalities, Davenport, Bettendorf, Riverdale, and Panama Park, that utilize the system, has made great strides in updating the 28E agreement, which comprises a joint use committee. He has also worked, he's also, in working with the staff, retrieved reserve capacity at the plant through updating existing industrial pre-treatment permits. His service is greatly appreciated, and his diligence and commitment to our water quality is unsurpassed. It is my honor to induct Dan Myers to the Golden Manhole Society. And for the city of Davenport, as the Iowa Environment Association considers appropriate that the organization sponsoring the significant contributor also be recognized as an organization which promotes praiseworthy investments of time and effort for the purpose of promoting safety, education, and professionalism in your water environment, I compliment you on attaining entry into the Golden Manhole Society.
performance, professionalism, and contributions to the water quality analysis profession. Individuals nominated express outstanding efforts in wastewater and environmental analytic analysis, including innovative sampling techniques, solutions to a treatment, analytical or environmental problem with unusual initiative, and performance above and beyond the call of duty. Helen Keys certainly fits the bill with all of these requirements. Helen is currently the lab supervisor and pre-treatment coordinator for the Davenport Water Pollution Control Plant, one of the largest facilities in the state of Iowa. Helen has a BS degree in biology with a minor in chemistry from the University of Iowa, and completed the City of Davenport Leadership Academy through St. Ambrose University. Helen began her employment with the city of Davenport as a pre-treatment inspector in 2001, and in 2004 became a laboratory chemist. By 2006, she was promoted to her current position as lab supervisor and pre-treatment coordinator. Helen actually also takes Greenhorn pre-treatment coordinators, as I was in 2010, under their wing, and teaches people in other cities how to, how to run pre-treatment programs, so I thank you personally for that very much. Helen has been an active member in WEG, Iowaea, and Iowa Water during her career with the city, and has played numerous roles with these organizations, including serving on Iowaea Lab Committee, where she plans educational conferences. Helen has been active in gathering samples and data with her Iowa Water and Scout Connie's biannual snapshot sampling program, coordinated by USGS through the University of Iowa. She has, in her community, she's been involved with the annual Bald Eagle Days, and has taken the initiative to mentor students from St. Ambrose University, where she shared her knowledge and experience with students as they completed internships in the Davenport WPCP lab. The lab and pre-treatment programs have been noted for receiving excellent reviews by the EPA and the IDNR, and successfully negotiated new pre-treatment permits with major contributing industries, which has reduced the organic loading allocations to the treatment plant from nearly 120% of the load to below 75%. It is my honor to present Helen Keys with the Iowaea Laboratory Analyst Excellence Award. Helen? Thank you very much, and congratulations to our great team, and as a member of the 28E group, we get to see the great work that you do in bringing all those four cities together to effectively utilize not only our great resources here, but also make sure we're keeping our water as clean as possible, and thank you very much for all your efforts. Right now, we'll move on to petitions and communication from council members and myself. First of all, Maria, our Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. I want to thank Alderman Rossen for actually putting me onto this information. This is, I wanted to announce the LISA Project, which is happening at our very own St. Ambrose University. I'm just gonna redo the description here shortly. You are invited to be one of the first to experience the LISA Project in Iowa. Please feel free to stop in and take in the 10-minute audio tour anytime during the hours that we'll list in a second here. We are happy to answer questions, discuss advocacy, and future exhibit events. The LISA Project is a unique multisensory exhibit experience, allowing the visitor to hear, see, and experience the reality of the world of child abuse. Through audio narration from a child's perspective, visitors are guided room by room through scenarios depicting abuse. This experience is fully immersing each guest into the world that these children face on a daily basis. And the times that those, that it will be available are the 31st from 8:30 to 4:00, the 1st of August from 8:30 to 4:00, and the 2nd from 8:30 to noon. So definitely check that out if you have a chance, very moving experience, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Clul?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got three meetings coming up next week, kind of a busy week. At 5 o'clock, at Eastern Iowa, Eastern Avenue Library, on the 30th of July, we're gonna have a Marla lift station update. We've got, we've got a situation where Public Works has determined that we need a sewage lift station to try to prevent sewage backup into basements, and we had a first discussion on this about a month ago, and that was before the time that Public Works had a lot of information on the design, the cost, et cetera. They're now coming back with the, the cost and the numbers, and so neighbors are very interested in what happens. There are a number of alternatives that are going to be proposed. Ron Hocker and Public Works folks will be present for that meeting, again, on the 30th at 5 o'clock, Eastern Avenue Library. Following that, at 6:00 PM, we're gonna have our regular sixth ward meeting, also at the Eastern Avenue Library. This month, we're gonna be discussing security, the current uptick in crime, some of the concerns about security in the neighborhood. We've already had one recently at Windsor Crest, and we're going to be doing this one for the sixth ward in general. The Jersey, Jersey Farms Homeowners Association recently had one of their, their meetings, and they are very concerned about what's going on out there, as we all are. So they're, they're anticipating building a video surveillance system. And so, one of the issues that we'll be talking about on Monday at 6 o'clock is video surveillance, and how that fits in, what the city is doing, you know, in terms of trying to, to use videos as a means of trying to reduce crime as well. So, that will be a good presentation, if you're not a sixth ward resident, you're certainly invited to attend that as well, as an honorary sixth ward attendee. Major Bladel and Corporal Hank Jacobson are gonna be presenting for that particular session. And then, most recently, I have a tentative arrangement to meet at the Public Works office at 5:30 on Tuesday, the 31st. The topic scheduled is Lorton 53rd Intersection Vacation. This is something, this is my ward, obviously, it has to deal with the first reading that we're gonna do, be doing tonight. And I've had a number of people say that they would like to see it vacated, other people have said not. So what I would like to do, to be a better informed council member, before we start to come to the first, second, and third readings, is to have a good read from my residents in terms of what it is that they really feel that they want out there, and this will help me to proceed with my decision-making process. So, again, that's going to be on the 31st, tentatively at Public Works at 5:30, and we will be putting out a next-door neighbor announcement, and also getting letters out, particularly to the folks on Lorton, Fairhaven, and 50, 51st, who are most impacted by this decision. So, big, big week next week, hope you can attend one or all of those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also be having a ward meeting on Monday, so it'll be a busy time. Mine will be at KSI at Jane's Place, 6:30 on Monday, and Clay Merritt will be there to present the CIP, current CIP projects going on right now throughout the city, and then to answer questions. So thank you. And also, you don't have to be in the eighth ward, obviously, so anyone is welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, your honor. First off, Rich, you're working hard to be a good Alderman, and the people in the sixth ward should be very thankful they got a guy working as hard as you are. Good job. And after the presentation for our treatment plant, I just want to take a second and recognize the old plant manager, and his quiet leadership, Dennis Ryan, you know, he quietly built one of the greatest treatment plants in the, in the world. People came from all over the world to visit Davenport's treatment plant for all the innovation that's done, and we just got recognized tonight, so Dennis, I don't know, 30 years he worked out there making it better, so, good, good job. Take care.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Grip?
Thank you, your honor. It's that time of year again, the best week in, in Davenport, comes around once a year. It's Davenport's homecoming, and the BICS Road Race and Festival, and I think it's a great time to encourage people to make sure that if you have never taken part in the BICS Road Race or the Festival, that you really ought to, whether that's walking or running the race, or going down to the BICS Fest, or cheering on the runners as a spectator. If you've never experienced the BICS up close, as a Davenporter, it's something that I would encourage you to do. And also, I think it's a great opportunity for us to showcase our city, how far we've come, especially our downtown, and we have a lot of folks who come into town specifically for the BICS, and whenever those people do, I make sure to take them downtown and show them every nice thing that's happened in the last 10 years. So, I would encourage you to do the same.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Condon?
It's hard to live in the Quad Cities and not know that this weekend is a BIC 7, but this year, we also have the honor of hosting RagBri, the Register's annual Great Bike Ride Across Iowa. And they started their journey on Sunday by dipping their rear tire on the westernmost part of the state, and they rode all the way across the state of Iowa, concluding this Saturday on our riverfront, and they're gonna dip their front wheel on the easternmost part of the state into our Mississippi River here. So, I just wanted to invite all of us Quad Cityans to help them put an exclamation point on the end of such a great journey. And, you know, the BICS is a spectator sport, too. Every, every town really opens their arms and receives these riders, and if you've never gone down to watch the bike ride roll in, the BICS starts nice and early and concludes relatively early. This year, maybe skip that afternoon nap, and come down to the levee and watch these guys come in.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. And you may wonder, the trumpet up here on the dais, we are the, the city of Davenport every year, the, there is an inner-city competition, and we have won a number of times, so we are the current trophy holder of the, the city award amongst all the different cities. We have actually most of the wins on that trophy, but it's up for grabs this weekend, so we're hoping that we will continue to hold this. We wanted to bring it to your attention that this is something that all the communities get involved, and so I think it's important that we all join in and enjoy the celebration, and it's good-natured fun, it is good-natured, it really is, but it is good-natured fun on this trophy. So, thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues this evening for all that great information and the hard work that they are doing as well. Again, a little bit of information, some of you are new to this process. Last, last week, at the Committee of the Whole meeting, we had a long agenda, you have copies of it now, we discussed every one of the items on that list. Most of those had no questions to be generated, there's a few that had questions, those are continued on the discussion agenda, which are, we're gonna be going into right now. It's important to understand, those other items, since there's no discussion with those, they go onto a consent agenda, and that means after we finish this process here, they'll be voted on in one process, okay? But these, we're gonna have some opportunities for some discussion. So the first item on the agenda, and this is, we're gonna read the third consideration, meaning there is a Committee of the Whole meeting, and then a city council meeting three times. So that takes a total of six weeks, to let you know how this process works. So tonight, the first, the third consideration for ordinance case number ORD 18-02, amending Title 17, to incorporate a zoning component to promote and create commercial identity for the Rockingham Road corridor through design and use standards. The text amendment will include a map amendment for the area along Rockingham from John Fell Drive in the southwest, and to, and to Marquette Street in the northeast portion of the corridor. City Davenport is the petitioner, and is there anyone with public with business, I mean, public with comments on this issue? Seeing, at the, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion by any Alderman? Seeing none, roll call, please. Uh, sorry. Yes, there was. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to, being a part of this, and then looking back over all the planning that's been done for so many years for this West End Corridor, the commitment of the people who live there to be engaged in that process, and to see a new vision for their part of town that they love so much and are so committed to, watching the task force work with their recommendations, some of which were incorporated into this plan. I also wanted to recognize Alderman Dunn in all of his commitment. Much of this area flows through the first ward as well as the third ward, and I know that he's been a great leader, and he never talks very much about that, but I wanted to recognize him as well. I'm so glad to see this come, I'm looking forward to what can happen in the future for this area, and the, the citizen involvement is, has been remarkable throughout all these years of planning, and I'm glad we're coming to a point where we can be, be moving forward.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, and again, I want to echo the comments related to Alderman Dunn, great job. So with that, will, and Alderman, will the clerk call the roll for the third consideration of this ordinance?
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor.
There it is, and the ordinance is adopted. The next, we have a third consideration, this is for ordinance amending various sections of the Davenport Municipal Code to bring uniformity to the process of licensing and permitting for right-of-way encroachments. Is there any public who wants to speak on this? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion by the Alderman? Seeing none, would you please call the roll for this third consideration?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor.
Thank you very much, and that ordinance is adopted. The next, what we have is a first consideration for ordinance case number REZ 18-08, being the request of William Torsia on behalf of WCT Investments, Davenport Series LLC, for rezoning on 6.5 acres, more or less, located along the south of East 53rd Street and east of Lorton Avenue, from R1 Low and Low Density Dwelling District to PDD Plan Development District to facilitate commercial development. Are there any public with comments on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm a Quad City Attorney representing about a dozen residential property owners who live south of 53rd Street on Lorton Avenue in Fairhaven. At last week's Committee of the Whole meeting, we presented a, our statement regarding the rezoning petition, and as you know, we're opposing it. However, we proposed five particular conditions that we believe should be added to this rezoning. And City Attorney Warner has given me the July 23rd, 2018 memo that I'm sure each of you also have regarding the staff position on the particular conditions. First of all, we want to make clear regarding the blacktop, of, blacktopping of Lorton, we want to make it clear that we're not interested in the curb and gutter and the storm sewers on the street, which staff recommends the total cost for that kind of project, including the repaving, would be 1.3 million. We don't, the, the residents are not requesting that, we are simply requesting the blacktopping of Lorton Avenue, which staff has a cost estimate of $300,000. Secondly, we want to make clear that if the number one priority that we have listed, which is vacating the northern end of Lorton Avenue, where it intersects with 53rd Street, is Dunn, the third, fourth, and fifth conditions, we believe become redundant, and we would agree to drop those conditions. So, what we're really looking at here, folks, is for the city council to pass a motion number one to vacate Lorton and install a cul-de-sac at the end of Lorton where it intersects with 53rd Street. Now, I heard Alderman Cleal tonight say that he's gonna have a ward meeting on this issue, and we welcome that. You have the first reading tonight of this ordinance, the rezoning ordinance, before the council, and of course, it's gonna become forward on, for the second and third readings during the months of August or September. And we believe that after Alderman Cleal has the ward meeting, that he may well come to the conclusion that the cul-de-sac is necessary, and we are asking, therefore, that the ordinance be amended tonight to simply add condition number one at this time, for further staff discussion and city council discussion at the second and third consideration that will be forthcoming after this meeting. We understand the staff's position on the blacktopping of- We understand the staff's position on the blacktopping of Lorton Avenue, and we understand that would be in play after this particular rezoning was approved. So what we're requesting is the motion be made to amend the rezoning amendment, adding condition number one only at this time, so that it's on the discussion at every, at the second and third meeting of the City Council. And after the ward meeting in the Sixth Ward and further discussion on this, we believe that council may well come to the conclusion that this is necessary. As you know, you're already vacating Fairway, Fairhaven Avenue to the east, and of course, we're simply saying what's good for the goose is good for the gander here. If you're gonna vacate Fairhaven and close it off, you ought to also consider, at the same time, vacating Lorton and closing it off. Anybody have, any of the council members have a question regarding what we are proposing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else from the public would like to talk on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and to everyone here tonight. My name is Charlotte McManus. I reside at 4728 Lorton Avenue. I'm not in costume tonight. We are, my husband and I have tickets for Mamma Mia at Circa, but I'll miss dinner, but I wouldn't miss this meeting for anything. I talked last week. My husband and I bought our home in 1972, exactly 46 years ago. And we have added, we're up to three acres of wonderful land, beautiful trees, beautiful everything. And I said last week, it's my paradise, and I feared that with the, what is happening on 53rd, it's going to be my hell. I was even quoted, I believe, in the newspaper. I've had several comments on that. But I have more to say about that. I still have a deep fear of the traffic situation. It's definitely, I, it's, I just don't agree with the traffic analysis that have come from the developers. I think it's gonna be much worse. Today, I was out at 12:45, headed to Aldi's on 53rd, tried to turn Chick-fil-A. The lines were, you couldn't even get through. You had to sit there and wait. I just see it developing into just such a nightmare that I know it's going to be dangerous, and you have to know it, too. I also worry about the water and the flooding that comes down and from these beautiful homes that are there that have taken the brunt of the water and have these terrible ravines in their backyard. And that's gonna get worse. I also now have another issue, and the mayor hit on it a little bit in his opening statements. We are seeing with Lorton and the, and the increased flow that's coming down from 53rd already, the increase in crime. From young people, we have had theft, auto theft, burglaries, and it's going to get worse. And I don't think you have to take my word for that. I think you're, you know it. Now, I just think, I know what a difficult job you have in all of areas that you work in, and the people, you must have many sleepless nights, thinking what's right for the people. But the people did elect you, and I think you have a little bit of responsibility to try and protect us the best we can. And our attorney mentioned about the cul-de-sac, but I just want to mention that the cul-de-sac would have let emergency vehicles and school buses through. Now, the other thing I just want to mention, I won't talk much longer, I just have a few minutes, but I just want to tell the young women and the gentlemen that spoke after me last week, they had all their facts and figures correct, and they'd done a lot of research. And those young women, they really had an interest in the environment. They talked about the preservation of trees that would take another 100 years to regrow, the birds, the wildlife, our dogs, our human beings, and most of all, our children. You know, we're not all old that live out there. Now, we have a lot that are 40 to 50 years old, and lots of children. I don't want anything to happen to any of them. You know, I sold real estate, and nobody wanted to sell a more expensive house than I did. But I'll tell you what's happening. Young people today, middle-aged, and for God's sakes, even some old people, all they want are bigger houses, bigger kitchens, bigger bedrooms with bigger walk-in closets, and a patio, but they don't care about the yard. They don't have time to take care of it, or don't even really want to. But they want strip malls, and they want more restaurants, because even with those great big kitchens, they don't cook. They either can't, or they won't. So again, I compliment these young women who still take an interest. I've always taken an interest in my land. And I do, I tell you, last week when I left here, I was so encouraged by all your questions to the developers, to the city, to our attorneys, to us. It showed you are really into this and thinking about it. And I was happy. We left here, went home, turned on the movie, Gone with the Wind. Now, I'm probably so much older that you probably haven't seen it as many times as I have, but it was right there out of Gone with the Wind. Gerald O'Hara standing with soil in his hand, talking to his daughter. Don't tell me that land doesn't mean anything to you. If you have a drop of Irish blood in you, the only thing worth living for, fighting for, or dying for, that's gonna stay there, is land. And that was that. I don't have a drop of Irish blood in me, even though I have an Irish name. I'm all Norwegian, but I love beauty and I love the earth.
Thank you very much.
And, okay, we're done. Okay, I don't care what nationality you are, but you all love the earth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We talked too long.
Thank you. That's okay, you're fine. Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to talk on this particular issue?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Talbert. I live at 4822 Fairhaven Court. And I don't know if you saw the petition that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Committee, but I walked around my neighborhood and gained some support from my fellow citizens to say, you know, we love the neighborhood, and we don't want to see the traffic come in, and we made some sacrifices together, and I've got that support in the petition. I don't know if you can get that from the, from staff or not. Is that something that could be?
It's in the council packet.
It's in our packet. Thank you very much. There's a lot of concerns, and a lot of it, as you can tell, is emotional. And I'm looking at the proposals and going through here, and as a taxpayer, one of my interests is, is of course, not only development, but also saving money in the community and preserving what we have and what we, what we value. And looking at the blacktop issue and closing off the Lorton Avenue intersection, that looks like a cost savings to the city of $1 million, even with blacktopping of the area that it costed $300,000. I'm sure you're aware of all of the different issues that we've had for water and the traffic. What I'm, what I'm requesting is a comprehensive plan and a timeline of how those issues are going to be addressed. And I encourage each one of you to think about having that plan, the cost, and the solution together before voting on the actual development and bringing those in, because there's a lot of questions that have come up from traffic along 53rd, safety, additional lights. And according to the traffic survey, it looked like we were gonna turn that section of 53rd into, I think it was a D-rating for traffic flow. I know a lot of people here tonight are only from the community south of 53rd, directly affected from Lorton and Fairhaven, but as an entire community, the people that traverse 53rd to get to and from work every day, you see the, you see the road rage, you see the aggravation, just from simple traffic backups. So we don't know the full impact of Costco. We don't know the full impact of what widening 53rd is going to be, or what our timeline is. So I would urge caution in moving forward with this until we have all the answers and all the information in front of us. That's what I asked tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I don't-
Excuse me, just would you, would you mind, just your name and your address?
I am Hal Reed. I'm at 4919 Lorton.
Thank you.
And I don't come to you with a prepared speech, or notes, or statistics, or just Our neighborhood, our community is about to change from what we can see. You know, I stood before the zoning commission and said everything that I could, along with the McManuses, the attorney, and it seemed to have fellow deaf ears. So I came here. Some of us are bought property there to raise families, some bought property there to live the rest of our lives. I decided to, Chrissy and I decided to retire there. But we don't want anyone to think that we're not for progress. The city has to progress if it's going to grow. But there's tons of land that is already zoned commercial. Then why take our housing and make it commercial? This is all we have. This is all we're going to have. There was mention of trees that it would take another 100 years to grow. That's all going to leave. My question to you, the zoning commission, the city planning, where will it stop? If you are taking residential area now off of 53rd, and it's pretty much going to 51st, what is to stop it, stop a developer from coming in and going to 46? That takes all of our homes. I simply plead to you to do more steady, to allow us to keep our homes as, as it is. Give us the opportunity to have our country life in the city. Again, I would love a Portello, but I just don't want to walk out of my back door and to their front door. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is David Odine. I live at 2742 East 51st Street in Davenport. And I'm one of the five members that, or the five property owners that, on 51st Street, that back up directly to the new proposed development. I thought maybe you'd like to hear from somebody that's closer to the development than, than the ones you've already heard. Some of those are two, three, and four blocks away, and I'm right there. My property is directly behind Portello's, dead center. So, sure, if I had my druthers, I'd rather see the same thing, I'd rather see the same, things stay the same, just as they are right now. But that's not reality, and I'm a realist. I've seen too much change out there now to know that things can't just stay the same like we would like them to. A brief, a little brief, brief history, just a couple items. You know, in 1974, we got city sewer. And that, that city sewer was fought vigorously by a small group. But it, and we finally got rid of those septic tanks. That was something that was badly needed, and the entire area thrived after that happened. In '78, we got the first two lanes on, of paving on 50, on 53rd, '78. And then it was 10 years, not too much happened. At first, it was just a nice road. But then 10 years later, in '88, they put the other two lanes in, became four-lane, and tied it into the interstate at that time. And that's when things really started to roll. And then in 1995, '94, '95 period, is when the Dexter and the Rostenbach Farms were sold. And then it, then it was, we were off to the races. Which brings us to today. The families that live in the proposed development have been living in this commercial, commercial environment with 33,000 cars and trucks per day, with all the associated traffic noise and exhaust emissions. They've been living with us for years. Then last year, 2017, came the game changer, the straw that broke the camel's back, and that was Costco, right across the street. When Costco was approved, two things happened to their homes. Their homes became unlivable, as nice as they were, they became unlivable and unsaleable. And I, so I asked the council members, and indeed, I ask every member in this audience, would you like to live in one of those houses now? I think not. I wouldn't. Well, they don't either. And yes, they are zoned R1, but they're living in a commercial with a capital C. If this rezon fails, it's almost a certainty that in a couple of years, another developer will be up here with the same rezon request. On the Fairhaven Road closure, no, Fairhaven is not a through street. We do have a lot of people cutting through the neighborhood to miss the Lorton light. This, this closure would stop that. This closure should help the neighborhood. Personally, I could live with it either way. It doesn't make that much difference to me, but I can see why some people would want it. As for the increased traffic on Lorton Avenue, that die was cast when Costco was approved. Failure of this rezon won't change that fact. As for the, as for the closing of Lorton on the north end and putting in a cul-de-sac with emergency-only gates, to me, that idea is ludicrous on its face for a variety of reasons, which I won't go into in the interest of time here. But just to say that a gate is a mechanical device, and anything mechanical can fail. And if Murphy's Law applies, if it can go wrong, it will go wrong, and at the worst possible moment. And if somebody's, have, house is on fire, and that gate is jammed because for one reason or another, you can see the implication there.
Yes, sir. Could you wrap up your comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. On the water issue, I think the water issue boils down, to me, it's not gonna solve the problem, but if, if the city could do a better job of cleaning out those ditches, we're relying on the, on the Lorton and the Fairhaven ditches to lead to the creek. And right now, the ditches are silt-laden, weed-laden, and, and the culverts are too small, and they're, and they're half-plugged up. And so those, those, those systems need to be cleaned out on a yearly basis. And that would, I'm not saying that would solve the water problem coming down from 53rd, but it would sure help. That's why we have water running out over the roads now, is because the water can't get through. So-
Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address this issue?
Patricia Brunner, 4840 Fairhaven Court. I walked around to my neighborhood and made sure everyone was aware of when City Council meets. I walked around to my neighborhood and made sure everyone was aware of when city council meets, where and what time. While doing that, I met with a neighbor who is unable to physically come to the meetings. So he gave me a letter and I told him I would read it for him. His name is Richard Hartz. He's at forty-eight ten Lorton Avenue. To whom it may concern, due to health concerns, I will not be able to attend the meeting, but I would like to interject my feelings on the project. First, about the cul-de-sac, I think this is a little overkill. Will emergency vehicles be able to maneuver this? And if not, would they decide not to use the street? This may have been, have a concern on the upkeep, upkeep of our street as well. Will this be a problem for school buses? An easy and expensive way to stop traffic from coming down Lorton is put a one-way sign. Traffic can go north between Fifty-first Street and Fifty-third with the exception of emergency vehicles who can go either way. And also the people who live on Lorton between Fifty-first and Fifty-third. This would also let the city have some time to see if this is going to be a traffic problem. I'm concerned about the water runoff. I think it would help, would help to clean out the creek that goes to Elmore Avenue and Forty-sixth Street. The faster we can get rid of the water, the better off we are. I would like to see some work done on Lorton Avenue Street, not paving it, but asphalt would work. So again, that's Richard Hartz. And now I can, I'll continue with my comments. So I'd just like to ask council if you've had some time to reflect on, if it's really been proven why the rezoning should occur? Is there a strong need for it? One concern I, I have that I haven't had brought up too much is noise. I took a drive down the commercial corridor, as we're referring to it, to see how it's laid out across the city. I started at Division Street and I drove to Falcon Avenue, which is right at the end of the city limits between Davenport and Bentendorf. Along the way, I counted six businesses that operate with drive-throughs that are currently in business. Only one of these butted up to a residential area. To me, businesses that have drive-throughs tend to be on commercial intersections, not butting up to neighborhoods. I asked that, is this really the best place to be putting these types of restaurants? Yes, I understand that the zoning allows for restaurants, but do restaurants with drive-throughs, traffic and noise really belong right next to our neighborhood? If anything, I think our neighborhood would better fit with a rezoning of CO zoning code. This district is intended to provide for commercial use of such character that may utilize existing residential structural, structures. It mixes well with residential commercial uses and is more harmonious with the surrounding development. So if you have had time to think about it, is PDD really the right type of zoning if you are leaning that way? I looked up, been following the Planning and Zoning Committee in my research. There's currently a case for REX eighteen dash oh-nine to develop eight acres just north of Utica Ridge Hy-Vee. The meeting last week proposed that they would come up with a plan where it stepped down the commercial into the residential area. So they didn't put C-one or C-two zoning right next to homes. They had a step-down plan where it started C-one, then went to C-zero, and then went to residential. Why is this not being considered for our area? And it is considered for other areas. Can we do a step-down approach? The other ti, other things I've been reflecting on this past week are infrastructure. I listened to what the engineer from Novak Construction said about the issues he has with getting cement trucks into his facility. Is this really the right timing for this type of project? Do we want two huge projects going on, on Fifty-third before it's even widened? What is the typ, typical protocol for this zoning and development of our city? Which comes first? I have yet to hear any benefits. I'd really like some proof around the benefits to the city and the, and the neighborhood for this development.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who would like to talk on this issue?
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. My name is Candy Pasternak. I reside at twenty-nine thirty-one East Locust. I work at three thirteen West Third. I'm here on behalf of WCT Properties, the developer, and the applicant and proponent who submitted the request for the rezoning to P&amp;Z. We do have some comments that we'd like to make, but first of all, we'd like to encourage council to support the recommendation of P&amp;Z and approve the rezoning as recommended by P&amp;Z. One of the things that I would like to point out to council is the fact that there was a significant public input at the planning and zoning level. So much so that at the time of the recommendation, there were conditions placed upon the rezoning by planning and zoning, which are part of today's packet for your consideration. And within those considerations and requirements, there are ten additional requirements in order to achieve this rezoning that they've requested that the developer comply with, and the developer has assured and committed to complying with those additional conditions. Because of that recommendation by P&amp;Z and the developer's willingness to cooperate and commit to those conditions, we would oppose any amendment to the proposed rezoning ordinance that's before the council to add any additional conditions. With respect to considering the rezoning from R-one to the PDD, one of the things that may have been missed, and, and maybe they just didn't have the opportunity to see it, but the two levels that are considered at the time of PDD is considered. And so I highlighted that from the staff report that there's a built-in protection when you deal with this due to the requirements of PDD zoning, that first the council receives the land use plan, and then there's the final development plan. In addition, city staff in their report has checked some of the reports from the developer as it relates to the traffic study, and has confirmed what the consultant for WCT Properties has presented to council in our last week committee of the whole meeting. Finally, we do have representatives from WCT here. Willie Torscha is here, Devin Birch is here, and Chris Wilkins is here. They will, I think Mr. Torscha will, would like to address the council as well. But at the end of all of this, the proposed rezoning, as it's presented to this council, is consistent with the Davenport twenty-thirty-five land use plan update of two thousand sixteen. And the staff has recognized, and it, and the plan's recognition of the exception to the residential general designation in a situation where you're in a commercial corridor, and the exception is for those edges that are already highly developed. And such is the case here. There's been a, a recognition of that development in terms of accommodating via traffic, the, the plan changes for Fifty-third, the already changed Fifty-third I-seventy-four exchange that was widened to accommodate further development. Finally, I think in the packet there are depictions of what the area would look like after the development has been completed. And I, I think that much of the residential nature of the neighborhood will be maintained. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who would like to speak to the council? On this issue?
Hello, my name is Brandy Alderson-Hurst. I'm Sixth Ward, forty-eight thirty-four, Fairhaven Court. And I was here last week. I've been through all the planning and zoning, zoning meetings as well. And I heard most of you last week that this was not a done deal. But in the same sentence, I also heard, but this is a business corridor. But it's also zoned residential, don't forget that. Why are we giving in to all these businesses that want this piece of land, our neighborhood, you know, as a cheap piece of land? Because there's other places all over the city. There's so many other businesses sitting empty across our city that, that's, that would work. You want to make Davenport a livable community, well, I think we need to fix what we have first. You know, we not only have these empty storefronts all over, but our streets are bad, not just in our neighborhood. But we have very few sidewalks, very few bicycle lanes. I think we just need to fix what's broken first. I agree, we need to think about long-term. But again, but how can we do this when we can't even keep up with our existing problems? Like the roads, the water issues, and our neighborhood, and traffic. And, and if you don't think that traffic will increase on Lorton, you're wrong. We live there, we see it. And, and if you haven't turned south onto Lorton from Fifty-third Street to try to get to maybe Elmore or Jersey Ridge, you probably will when Costco goes in. If, if you haven't already, because a lot of people have discovered this, it's, it's a lot faster. You know, you're not dealing with the traffic and you're not dealing with the lights. And so that's where we're getting a lot of our traffic. More traffic, the worse the, the roads become as well. And this is also, I would personally like to see Fairhaven stay open, and, and Lorton. Because I think when, you know, we're, we're talking also about with Fairhaven being closed, it's already affecting, you know, you know, my family and the neighbor, and the neighborhood kids because that reroutes the bus. Where's the bus going to stop? Again, you know, where are my kids going to be dropped off? You know, because of the bus route with, right now they're at Fifty-first and, and Fairhaven. I've already contacted the bus service, they won't go down to our cul-de-sac. So where's the bus going to drop off? And don't forget, there, it's, it's pretty hilly out there, too. We don't have sidewalks, the roads flood, snow removal, that's a whole nother issue. So if you say that it won't affect traffic, it, it already has. Because, you know, again, where are my kids going to get dropped off at? Again, you know, we hear that this area deserves to have businesses, but what about us homeowners? What do we deserve? We deserve more traffic in our neighborhood? Do we deserve, you know, less peace and quiet in our paradise? Do we deserve to have our street cut off? Do my children deserve to be in danger of cars flying by on Lorton as they walk on flooded streets or snow-covered streets because of no sidewalks? Do we deserve to see all these trees cut up? Don't forget those pictures that I showed you last week in, in place of a six-foot fence. Because there's no plan, you know, or money to fix these problems. And the new drainage system, you know, the developer says that it's not going to change anything or, or make things any, any worse. But I don't know how it could get worse. Because some homeowners can't even get into their driveways because it's flooded. And then, you know, my kids, when they walk home, they're pretty much walking in the middle of the street because you can't walk on the sides because it's all the snow or all the rain, or all the rainwater. And then you have those hills. And then you get these people flying through the neighborhood. It doesn't take much for them not to see the kids, especially a small five-year-old. So when you're cutting, you know, clear-cutting all these mature trees and replacing it with concrete on top of what's already coming off of Costco, I don't feel like that's fixing anything. I mean, if our area deserves to be rezoned, what about the neighborhood a hundred yards west of us on Fifty-third, right next door? I believe Fredericks and, and Woodland. I hear that that can't be changed to, or changed into business because of some of the elevation issues. So, I mean, won't that look odd? You're looking at six and a half acres turned into business, but yet you have seven more homes just to the west of us that will stay? Because I'm sure that these homeowners want to know if I'm wrong, so they can get double for their property, too. And, and in closing here, I just ask you, you know, take a look around, fix the problems that we already have, make the city a little more livable. And I, and I hope that you do hear our concerns and, and realize that the negatives outweigh the positives.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. I'm Travis Hunter-Zuber, resident of the Sixth Ward. If you remember, I spoke to you last week at the committee of the whole meeting regarding this proposal. And my approach then, and continues to be slightly different than what you may be hearing. I'm not saying that this should never be developed, never be changed from residential. What I'm saying is, let's look at the timing of this change. And I'd like to continue that discussion, but from the perspective of risk management. And if you ask, what does this guy know about risk management? For those of you that don't know me, I am an engineer by education and experience. My wife tends to call it a genetic deficiency, but she's learned to live with it. I also maintained a professional engineering license in the state of Iowa for over thirty-five years. So I understand duty to public and duty to protect. So risk management was very much part of my life when I was working. And we all know there is no change without unknowns and risk. Development such as this proposal is change and therefore is going to create risk. The key is to identify those risks, manage them, and as necessary, mitigate them. A tool we commonly use in risk management is called the Risk Probability Number, or in short term, we call it RPN. It's a simple process conceptually. You define the outcome, or the issue, or the problem that you think may happen. What's tricky is you define that in a quantitative manner. Instead of saying, there's going to be water all over the place south of Lorton, or south of Fifty-third on Lorton, you need to say, under these rainfall conditions, we experienced this much water. Then, you need to look at, and you assign a score to the frequency for that event. Does it happen one percent of the time, twenty-five percent of the time? And you score it accordingly. Then you say, what is the impact? In other words, is water sitting in the ditches in Lorton as big an impact as water that is over the street? Obviously not, so you give them different severity scores. The end result, you multiply the probability score by the severity score, and you look at those high numbers and you develop and implement mitigation plans. Why is this relevant to this proposal? As an engineer or project manager, you develop a love-hate relationship with RPN. You love it because it forces you to make better decisions and minimize risk. You hate it for two reasons. It's work. It takes time and people and thought to create the scenarios, define the probability, define the impact. And the worst reason you hate it is, it removes subjectivity from the debate. You become more objective. You start looking at it, and instead, instead of saying, the traffic count's going to increase to such and such, you look at it and say, transit time from Elmore to Jersey will be X certain percent of the time. And then you have to decide if that's acceptable. My concern is, at this time in this proposal and our discussion, everything is very subjective, at least that I'm hearing. I'm encouraging us to think about becoming more objective. Not quite sure how, but I'm open to thoughts on that, too. But I look at it and say, that's what we need to do. I'm a proponent of responsible development, be it commercial, residential, or industrial. But I also tell you that responsible development has many dimensions. Financial, environmental, architectural, and risk management. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have another public member?
You wanted me to have this pad?
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, William Torscha, WCT Properties, East Peoria, Illinois. I wanted to address you folks- I wanted to address you folks tonight, just to tell you a little bit about WCT Properties and, you know, address some comments and concerns from the last few meetings that we've had. Because it's time for me to defend myself a little bit here. So anyway, my wife and I have been married 29 years. We started WCT in 1998. WCT has the expertise, the financial ability. And we've we've put together a great team of professionals to make sure that this project becomes a reality. WCT has been investing in Davenport since 2008. And we have invested or in developed four different locations. And we have sold those locations over the years. But we're back here now reinvesting our profits from the sales of those properties back into Davenport with this particular proposal we have in front of you folks. This particular development, when it's completed, will have a market value of about $15 million. They talk about what it will do in real estate taxes, I think you've seen that in the packet. But I think the folks in the audience needs to know that, you know, there's a significant real estate tax upside here for the city of Davenport. And, you know, without the profits from the other developments that I've sold in the past here, I really wouldn't be here today to stand in front of you and to be talking about this particular development. Folks have said that, you know, that developers sometimes cut and run. And and I'd really like, I mean, I think that you've seen in the packet, the the four properties that I've developed here in town. I rode by them again today just to double-check to make sure that I was telling you correctly. But those properties are in very, very beautiful shape. The landscaping and the and the and the maintenance of those buildings have been impeccable. And and the reason that is, is because the developer doesn't maintain those properties. Those properties are developed by the or those properties are maintained by the tenants. And that's why they look as nice as they look, because the tenants want those, you know, to invite the folks into their into their properties. There was a comment about the Portillo's in Peoria and about the tax dollars that Portillo's received from from the city of Peoria. To set the record straight, Portillo's did not see, has not received and will not receive one dime of or of tax dollars from the city of Peoria. The city of Peoria assessed a 1% sales tax increase over and above the normal rate of sales tax. So the Portillo's guests pay that tax. That tax is collected by the city of Peoria and then it's paid to WCT. And that was to help reimburse WCT for some infrastructure costs that were needed. This is a limited-time program and the and the program is capped at a dollar amount, so it doesn't go on forever. Okay? As far as the city of Davenport's concerned, WCT and/or Portillo's, as you all know, is not receiving any money from the city in any way, shape, or form. There's been comments about cheap land and the developers buying this cheap land, okay? In the six and a half acres, WCT is paying an average of $584,000 an acre. Now, that's some pretty good Davenport Quad Cities land at 84,000 or 80, yeah, or $584,000 an acre. There's questions about the developer infrastructure. We have plans to add to the fourth leg of the the traffic light at Costco and a left-hand turn lane on westbound 53rd and a right-hand turn lane on westbound or eastbound 53rd. And also the turnaround on Fairhaven Avenue at the bottom there, where we're creating that cul-de-sac there. Just wanted to mention this as something to take into consideration. The cost for me to vacate Fairhaven was is going to be close to $1 million. And the reason that is, is because I had to buy two additional houses. And I had to, we have to pay for the turnaround lane. So I think that you have to take that into consideration when you want to consider to vacate Lorton. There was questions about the how this development's going and the signed leases and those kind of things. When I wrote this down on Monday, I had two signed letters of intent. And we were we're working on two leases. Since that time, I have a third signed letter of intent. And we should be receiving a lease draft from them very soon. So there's been extremely, very, very good interest in this particular property. I wanted to mention stormwater detention just real quick. And I just to give you a sense of what, I mean, how large the stormwater detention is that we're creating here, okay? It's 560,000 gallons of storage is what we're going to create on our property. Okay? And we figured this out in the way here today. But if you take a football field and imagine a football field with one and a half feet of water on it, that's how much water we're going to retain on our site. And then we're going to drop that, drop the water out at a controlled rate. And so we are going to make the water situation better. And 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 the city ordinance says that we need to make it better. And we have every intentions to abide by the ordinance and and make the situation better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, yes, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak on this particular issue?
Hello, my name is Kristy Bennett, I live at 4919 Lorton Avenue. About a year and a half ago, Hal Reed, you've heard from him previously tonight, chose to sell our beautiful home in Bettendorf, Iowa. And we bought property at 4919 Lorton Avenue. We took the money that we used from the sale of our Bettendorf house and invested it in a Davenport property that had been unattended to for about four years. So the property was not in good condition. But we took our money and decided we wanted that property because of its park-like setting on a quiet street. If you proceed to approve this plan from these developers, you are taking away our investment. I sell real estate for a living. And so I know that what will happen to our property is it will be lowering the value of what we have purchased there. Asking you to please reconsider that. When you see the reports of the traffic that the traffic engineers are proposing, I do not believe that those are correct. There is no possible way that the traffic is not going to significantly increase on Lorton Avenue. Asking each one of you to please take a minute out of your lives and drive on Lorton Avenue just south of 53rd and look at the street. There is, the the city is, that street is full of repairs that have already tried to be done. There is no sidewalks, there is no curbs. There is no way that that street could handle any more traffic. And if you could just take a minute and drive down that street, you will see that it's not feasible to increase the traffic on that street without doing some major work to it. Again, what I'm asking you for is to please reconsider if this development goes forward through step one, step two, step three of your approval process. There's no turning back. There's no realizing that, oops, we made a mistake. Maybe we didn't calculate the traffic correctly. Maybe we shouldn't have approved this and put that property right there. Let them develop that, our residential land right there. There's no turning back. So please reconsider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this topic? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Elaine, I live at 4810 Fairhaven Court. We've been there for about seven years. What I do want to say more than what my neighbors have said was that I understand this is more about, it's more about money when you look at it. Because we're on the side of family. On our block alone, on on the court, there's 18 young kids and children that we enjoy every day, being able to play on the cul-de-sac without high-traffic areas coming through, you know? It's just, you want them to have a good life. And as you walk through the neighborhood, going to 51st or going up to 53rd or even going onto Lorton, we have a great community. There's family, there's life, there's beauty, there's nature. I just hope that you guys really think about, not so much of what I, I guess what I want to say is, I understand that 53rd is is high-traffic, it's bringing in businesses. I want to piggyback what I think my other neighbor said, that we need to work on the other areas of Davenport. Kimberly Road could be, I mean, it was, it used to be the bomb. You can go down Kimberly Road and you saw the different types of restaurants and the stores, North Park Mall. She's right, we need to fix that area. When I think from a retail perspective, I mean, the name alone of Portillo's, I mean, you heard it before on Facebook months and I think a years before the actual event is going to take place. They have a following. People will follow their favorite place. We, women do that as far as their clothes, you know, we'll travel to Iowa City, we'll travel to find what we want. It's the same thing with Portillo's. The west end of Davenport could be used also with putting a great restaurant there. A lot of people live on on west end of Davenport. They're excited about what's going on on the further part as far as like their Walmart and Culvers and everything else. I'm just asking that you take into the heart of our area and the people that live there. And we love it because it's a great community, that we look out for each other. And it's a happy area. We don't have to have any more clutter. And they just want to capitalize on the traffic of Costco. It's not fair for us to be victims of that greed. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? It's been moved and seconded to move the consideration, the first consideration. Is there any alderman with comments? I see Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wrote down a couple of things as I was listening to people talk. One thing that I did want to mention was we got a revenue estimate from staff and that the increase yearly, and please correct me if I don't get the, if I read this wrong, was $88,000 per year just to the city, $235,000 per year when you spread it across the county and the school district and things like that. And then I also, a misconception that I had had at one point about the site selection was, you know, why, well, I couldn't, they put it here. Why couldn't they put it somewhere? And I I've heard that as a comment from some of the residents. And that it's the, and I'm probably going to way oversimplify this, but that they're not looking at a map. They didn't say, oh, I want to go to Davenport and then find a difference, find somewhere within Davenport. They're looking at numbers on a spreadsheet of, I'm looking somewhere within X miles of my distributor that has Y amount of traffic and Z density, that it's, it's not as as simple as, well, they can go up the street. And then in terms of property values, and I wasn't able to refine this in writing, but that the trend has been when commercial is residential has been rezoned to commercial, that almost exclusively the surrounding residential goes up in value. And I'm getting a nod from our finance director. So just wanted to put those out there. I know it's it's still under debate, but just making sure we're we're all on the same page about what we're what we're deciding on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if Tom can answer this question? Or maybe Nicole? Storm drains, storm water, culverts or ditches, whatever that neighborhood has, who's responsible for keeping their drainage in their property cleared up?
Hi, thanks, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. Per our ordinance, storm, like ditches and culverts under driveways are actually private property. They are not things that are accepted into the city's system.
And Nicole, we do have a residential sidewalk policy. What is that?
So if a, at any time, if a neighborhood wants sidewalks or the city council deems it necessary to have sidewalks, the city council can order those in to a neighborhood. But then again, that would, if it's ordered in, depending on the situation, it could either be 100% of the property when his owner's cost or 50%, depending on the council's pleasure.
All right, thanks, Nicole. And, you know, the developer, he said he wants to be a great neighbor. He's working on a compromise. Lawyer Malloy came up with some shigets and staff has addressed them. I, you know, Jethon got up, who was an engineer, and talked about how great engineers are. You know, we've got plenty of engineers that have reviewed this project. And we're getting opinions from the city's engineers, you know, the developer's engineers. And, you know, probably, problem is, we've got too many engineers involved in this thing, so. But things are moving forward, you know, the developer's working on compromise. And, you know, the council, we got eight wards. And every ward has great neighborhoods and every ward has, you know, we want to protect all our neighborhoods. You know, we got streets that, there, there's a big list of streets to be repaired. And I know your neighborhood's been on the list for a while, along with my neighborhood, you know, Drive Out West Locust. West Locust has had been on the list for 20 years and it's going to be addressed, at least some of it is, so. Hey, we're, we'll keep the dialogue going. And, you know, protecting your neighborhood is extremely important to the city council and the mayor. And nothing is ever as bad as you envision. And Mrs. McNabb, you got a little bit of heaven in your neighborhood. You know, we're going to do whatever we can to protect that. And I think the developers already agreed to that. So I want to thank everybody for coming down and sharing their perspective. And let's try to work together and find a compromise where everybody's happy and everybody's protected.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gribb?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a few brief comments on what I would say are the three main concerns that that I've heard. The first would be the concerns of the water runoff, which is currently an issue without the rezoning, is what it sounds like to me. Is there are, there are some water issues, but that's not due to a Portillo's or a development. That's due to some things that that need to be done, potentially cleaning out ditches and culverts, making sure that we we've got right sizing in that area. And I think that Public Works is is going to be on that, like some confirmation that that is going to happen, that we're doing our part now. And then it seems to me that the water retention plan that Portillo's has, not only is it good, but it far exceeds what is required. And they will be doing their part as part of the rezoning. The other two things, and they play into each other. The first is traffic. And remember last week, I, I think there's there's regional traffic, which is a concern on 53rd and Elmore. I stated my opinions on that. Traffic is not going to get less on 53rd and Elmore, not even when we widen the road. That is, the commercial corridor in the Quad Cities, demand is high and will continue to be high. But you also have the local pass-through traffic on Fairhaven and Lorton. And that is a different concern. And that could be affected by this development. And it's something that we we need to consider. And that kind of takes me to this other, this other piece. Tranquility is a is a word that I've heard several times from many of the residents. And as someone suggested that we should get out there and see the neighborhood, as I I do with almost all rezonings, I've probably driven in that neighborhood 15 times. My wife and children can attest to that, they're tired of seeing that neighborhood. But I'll continue to to drive through throughout this rezoning process. What I've seen is, it is a very tranquil, tranquil, unique neighborhood. It's almost a rural neighborhood. So in 12 to 15 times, I've passed one car. So I have not seen a lot of traffic, but I have seen a lot of pedestrians. I've seen neighbors walking to and from each other's houses, and there are no sidewalks. Everybody walks on the road like it's a rural road. So that is a a concern, is there will be pass-through traffic from 53rd. How much that'll be, I'm not certain. But that makes, that makes me believe that we, I am inclined to consider the the cul-de-sac option. But I don't think that we need to do it this reading, because I'm not sure that there's consensus, even within the neighborhood, that everybody wants it or what they want that cul-de-sac to look like. But I'm sure that Alderman Clul is But I'm sure that, uh, Alderman Clul is the guy at his neighborhood meeting, uh, to listen to the residents and get to a point where hopefully there is some consensus on that. And then it, it's certainly something that I would, uh, be willing to, to entertain going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, I had a question for staff, um, in looking over the memo that we received and that was referenced earlier in the meeting. Um, you know, gated, I think gated cul-de-sacs are not something the city does. And they wouldn't open them for buses. Um, um, and there's a question about whether it could be for emergency vehicles. So here's my question. Um, you had talked about in, in the memo, um, the length of, the additional time added to, for public, um, you know, emergency vehicles. Um, so if, uh, right now, the, the furthest point is point six miles. Um, and assuming Lorton were, uh, were vacated and there was a cul-de-sac there, which I am inclined to, uh, be in favor of right now, but I do want to see what happens at the meeting. Um, but if Lorton was vacated, it, it says it increases to approximately two miles. Um, and so the question that certainly the neighborhood would have to think about, is that acceptable? And the question is, how much longer does that mean in terms of actually getting to, um, a, a house? Um, if it caught, if it took three minutes before, how much longer it's going to take? I don't know who can answer that question, but.
Maybe I'll take a stab at it. Um, we, we can certainly take a drive of that and kind of figure out exactly what that would be. Obviously, an emergency vehicle with lights on would get there faster. Um, so, so we can, we can kind of do some timing of that much.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if it's, if it takes an emergency vehicle two minutes now to one address, how many minutes would it take, um, in, with, with a cul-de-sac? That's my question. Pretty simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody coming down, um, so including neighbors, including the business, um, representatives. I appreciate your time and everybody has put together a well-thought-out, uh, presentation and discussion. So we do appreciate that. Um, the sidewalks keep coming up and I just wanted to clarify because we've had this issue for many years, um, on and off. And so unfortunately or fortunately, depending on which way you want, um, years ago, when areas were developed, a lot of the developers and a lot of the homeowners back then did not want sidewalks. Um, it is an issue that we are dealing with currently because more and more people want sidewalks now. Um, so that is something that we're working on. Um, each area is individual, has their own, um, obviously, um, opinions on that. So just to clarify, you'll see neighborhoods throughout Davenport that do not have sidewalks and that's why. Um, so anyway, so that's one. Um, second, I just wanted to say, um, I do, I, I'm excited about this opportunity, want to see this going forward tonight. As the mayor and others have explained, we do have four more weeks to talk about this. Um, so we hear your concerns and we certainly want to talk about those and make sure that this is correct and that we're doing everything that we can, um, and that it's appropriate. So, um, I appreciate Alderman Clul, who's going to have those meetings, um, and hopefully, um, see where we can get this to go. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins and Alderman Clul.
Well, I too want to thank everybody for your advocacy tonight. Um, it's very important, you know, as I was just thinking as, uh, Alderwoman Tompkins was talking, I wondered, you know, at what point in time will AI, artificial intelligence, be sitting up here at this dais? And, and maybe the decisions that AI determines will not make you any more happy than the decisions that we're coming up with. But I think of, of, uh, of Charlotte McManus's, uh, paradise and hell metaphor. And I've thought about that a lot. And, you know, I don't know what a computer would do with the numbers because truly for somebody that's lived in the neighborhood for forty years, hell can be something that a computer, through its algorithms, might not determine is hell. And, and so that's what makes decision-making up here at the dais difficult. And I, I doubt that AI will be here very soon because I don't think anybody would be very happy with the decisions that were made by a computer. Um, but I, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I won't, uh, I won't move to amend to include the, the cul-de-sac this evening because like I said, I want to have this ward meeting with folks and, and listen and hear from them about what they have to say. Uh, and, and frankly, all of the things that have come up tonight, um, uh, would blow an, an artificial intelligence computer's mind, I think. There's a lot of things to think about here. Um, and so I, I plan to take this back and on Tuesday, uh, with our, our ward meeting, um, that will also help me in terms of trying to come to a conclusion. I do believe that the developer has presented a good case. Um, I, I hope that during one of these readings, that Devin, you'll talk more about the water containment system, being able to handle, uh, a hundred-year flood event, a hundred-year event and contain that, uh, is pretty incredible. And truly, our water management plans are, are top-notch. I don't know if they're the most restrictive in the state, but they're certainly very good. And as a wildlife biologist, natural resources guy, I appreciate the thought that went into water containment. And I know it's an important issue for, for, for folks there in the footprint of the proposed Portillo's. Uh, Travis, I, I mean, the same thing with AI. I'm thinking, you know, this is not, uh, an algorithmic decision that's being made. Uh, God bless engineers, I love them, but, uh, it's not that neat. But I, I will tell you this, that the decisions being made by engineering staff at the city are not, uh, they're not subjective. I know that they're objective. Um, I, we could not allow engineers to be making, uh, subjective decisions about something as important as this. So anyway, I, I look forward to my meeting this coming Tuesday and, um, um, next week. When we talk about this again, I'll, I'll have a better basis on which to, to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. And again, I thank you for the upcoming meetings. I think it's important to, uh, hear the peoples and thank you for expanding my thought process on AI. I appreciate that as well. It's interesting thought. Alderman Rosson.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, and I also enjoyed your AI comments, Rich. Um, so I, I just had a few things. I was taking notes for everybody that got up and spoke. Um, and I, I do want to reiterate, first of all, one thing Alderwoman McGinnis was saying. So, you know, the cul-de-sac piece, that will not be gated because we don't do that. That would be a precedent we'd be setting in the city that every community would want a gated entrance. Um, uh, that's, uh, that would be fascinating. Uh, but the cul-de-sac piece, um, I would be very much in favor of that because I totally understand you want to preserve your neighborhood and the feel of it. But at the same time, I also recognize that there's a limited number of people here from the neighborhood. And I, for one, don't make decisions based on a small percentage of people. The entire neighborhood needs to be involved in that discussion because you're talking about safety issues. So fire, police, not being able to get to your homes. I mean, right now, you're, you're more upset about Costco and Portillo's. But if you have a fire at your house and it takes an extra thirty seconds for the fire department to get there, you're going to be upset at the city for that. So that's a, for me, a, a real big concern that needs to be discussed before we even have a conversation about doing a cul-de-sac and cutting off access to your neighborhood. And again, if everybody in the neighborhood is willing to sign off on that, I'd be, I mean, I'm fine with it. But you, everyone, not just the people sitting here, and I literally mean signing off on it, um, would have to understand what that means as far as an increase in response of safety personnel. So that's just, don't take that lightly. Um, I did, uh, I did like one commentary. I think it might've been the letter that Patricia was reading about having a one-way sign. I thought, that's an idea. Um, can we just take a look at that? Someone from staff, a one-way sign on Lorton? That way it would literally move traffic one way, but not the other. Um, I actually liked that, I don't know if anyone else did, but I thought that was an intriguing idea. Um, I did want to note that there are lots of restaurants with drive-throughs, Patricia, that have, that are next to residential properties if you go elsewhere in the city. So I live south of Locust and we have lots of restaurants that butt up against, um, residential properties. So that's not an uncommon thing in the city. And I, I do want to note, and I do agree with Alderman Grip, that 53rd, the area that you live next to, for good or bad, is, um, a highly valued commercial area. And the traffic there is going to be there. There is not going to be any reduction of that anytime in the foreseeable future. It's hot property. If I was a developer, that's where I'd want to put in a business. Now, if I could get the developer, and since you're here, to put in a, a, a development on Locust in Fifth Ward, that'd be great. But realistically, the place to be would be 53rd. And the place to market that is across the street from Costco. It is not somewhere else in the city. So if I was a developer, that's exactly where I'd want to go. And that's why they chose that spot more than likely. They looked at their numbers, they looked at the constant flow of people in and out of that area. And it's a commercial area. That's where people go to have dinner, to shop, to do whatnot. And that's where, uh, a development would want to build. And that makes sense to me. And I think staff has included in their report, addressed a lot of, of the concerns. Um, and of course, we will continue to work with you on amending some of those, uh, so that, you know, things work well for the neighborhood as well. Um, and then the last thing, yes, and I do agree with, uh, Brandy. We want to make Davenport livable, fix what we have. Yes, we do. I'm a big proponent of fixing what we already have in the city instead of allowing it to expand further outward. So this isn't exactly an expansion, um, it's a redevelopment of the property. Um, but I also just wanted to tag onto something Alderwoman Dickman said, um, in that, you know, this development, the neighbors that live, your neighbors that live on 53rd sold their homes or at least have a contract to sell their homes. And that's a private, um, process. The city wasn't involved in that. So, I mean, anyone, I could go out and buy these three people's homes here if I wanted to pay them enough for them to encourage them to leave. And I'm sure there's a price tag I could offer that all three of them would sell to me. So, I mean, that's the reality of the situation. The business saw an area that's an opportunity. It is in our comprehensive plan that we can have some development here. Um, and I also had a question for staff, final thing of, I would think with this development, putting in such large storage tanks underground, that might help some of the water runoff on the residential areas? I mean, is that correct? And the, the director of Public Works is saying, yes, that is correct. So, I mean, for that part, um, and I did notice in the staff report, no one has actually called in to complain about their water problems in your neighborhood. Um, but this would actually help those issues as well. So I think there's, I think there's a lot of good things that are involved in this project. And we still want to hear from you, some of your concerns, and we'll continue to address those as we move forward over the next four weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and thank you, Alderman Rosson. Um, and I, I'll give you one more shot in a minute, Alderman Dickman. Um, I, I just wanted to clarify, you know, we have an age, an, an, an old city. And we're doing a lot of investment. Um, this council has been very, very, very committed to infrastructure. And we are committing twenty million dollars a year over the next six years to street sewers and infrastructure. So it's important to understand, there's a process of how that's all done. We're analyzing streets, so we're working on that. It's not done yet, but we're working on that. And that's a big commitment when you're talking about those kind of dollars. So, um, help us, your eyes and ears open because, um, but every street has been charted. We know where they are in order of, of process to help that happen. So we're working on those as well. Alderman Dickman, please, one more time.
Thank you, Your Honor, for giving me a, a second chance to speak here. Um, the, something that Alderman Rosson had brought up as well, and I think some of the residents had said, was that, you know, we should be fixing the problems that we have already. And with the increased revenue that we would get from having this development, that gives us, albeit not a huge amount in the grand scheme of, of city budget, but more money that we could use to incentivize, uh, you know, small businesses or to, you know, fix roads or to have more police staff, whatever it is, um, having more resources available to do those things, to fix the, the challenges that we do face because we are an older city. Um, and while the developers here, Second Ward, has plenty of opportunities, so come see us.
You're staggling on to me.
I am.
Uh, thank you again. And I just wanted to say, if, um, you know, as much as it seems like it's a process, which it is here, um, if we didn't care, we would've had this vote already. It'd been done. Um, by the questions that all of our aldermen and council members have asked, we are trying to get informations and get total, a broader perspective before we make final decisions. So rest assured that there's nothing been decided yet. It takes six weeks for a reason. And, uh, thank you for all for being here. Thank you for clarifications from the developer side. Thank you for the neighbors giving their concerns as well. And we'll continue this as we move forward. So, um, with that, um, we've had all, no more discussion. Will the alderman call the role on the first consideration of this ordinance?
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rosson?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our, our next item for consideration is also a first consideration. Um, and again, I would just want to preface before I read that, that in fact, um, this is part of that overall discussion that Alderman Clul is going to have, uh, with the city residents. So I just wanted to clarify that. But again, a first consideration, ordinance for case number ROW eighteen dash zero one, being the request of William Torsia on behalf of WCT Investments, Davenport Series LLC, for the vacation or abandonment of point three-four acres, which is fourteen thousand eight hundred and twelve square feet, more or less, of right-of-way known as Fairhaven, extending approximately two-hundred-and-eighty feet south from East Fifty-third Street to facilitate commercial development. Is there anyone from the public wants to speak on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael Malloy, attorney for residents who are opposing the Portillo's rezoning. Uh, you have in front of you the first consideration of the vacation of, um, Fairhaven Avenue. And I would suggest to you, again, you're going to go forward and approve this, that you should also look at, in the same sense, Lorton Avenue to be vacated and closed off. The, um, the, uh, what's good for the goose is good for the ganners, we previously said. If you're going to vacate Fairhaven, please consider this as a reason to also vacate and close Lorton Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dale Gilmour, I live in the sixth ward. Although this isn't exactly my neighborhood, that doesn't mean I don't have an opinion. So I'm going to give it to you. Um, there, there's a few things that I just want to highlight, made, made a bunch of different notes. One of the aldermen said that the travel for emergency vehicles would go from six-tenths of a mile to two miles. That's three-point-three times longer. Now, oversimplifying, that means it's going to take three times, three, three-point-three times longer for an emergency vehicle to get there. Now, I realize, yeah, they go, you know, but, but just that, that, that was the number I threw out. Okay, and the developer said that, well, you know, weren't asking the city for anything. Well, you want to vacate, uh, extending approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-five feet south from East Fifty-third Street? Two-hundred-and-eighty-five feet? Okay, let's just call it three-hundred. I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty darn close. That's the length of a football field. You know, he talked about football fields. Now granted, Fairhaven's not as wide as a football field, but we're giving him a football field. You know, he's given us nothing for it. You know, who's paying for the design, the engineering and the construction of the cul-de-sac? If, if, if the developer is paying five-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars an acre and we're giving him a third of an acre, that's a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars that we're giving him. Now granted, it's not money right out of the till, but it's, you know, it, it's something that we have to look at. And again, who's paying for the design, the engineering and the construction of this cul-de-sac? I think a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars for the abandonment of the street could sure help cover the cost of the cul-de-sac. Um, I had a couple of other things, but I, they escaped me now, but it's, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to talk about this issue? Yes, sir.
William Torsia, WCT Properties. Um, I, I have a little handout that I'd like, maybe I could give to the clerk, uh, to hand out to the, uh, to you folks here, uh, the city council members and the mayor. Um, but it's, it talks about stormtech.com. And Stormtech is the system that we plan to use for the underground storage system. And there's like a five-minute, four-minute video online. If you'd like to learn more about stormtech dot, or the, the system that we're using, there's a video here. Um, but anyway, I would like to hand these over to you if I can. And I just wanted to address one more item. Um, there was talk last week about, um, renderings for the backyards and, and, and meeting with the neighbors and that kind of, um, uh, that was a concern of one of the commissioner or the, one of the aldermen here. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I personally have met with the, most of the folks that their homes abut the property that I'm trying to purchase. Um, and that I've worked with them with individual plans for their landscaping and what their backyard's going to look like. And I think that the protest rate was only seven-point-four percent. And it was low because we worked really hard to try to make. we worked really hard to try to make, to be a really good neighbor, to try to make sure that the folks that were going to, going to abut the property that we were trying to purchase here, were going to be taken care of and, and that, and they were going to get exactly what they wanted from a landscaping standpoint and, and how their backyards are really going to look. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from any of the aldermen on this topic? Seeing none? Jackie, would you please call the role on the first consideration of this ordinance?
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. And this ordinance will move to a second consideration. Next, we have a motion to, if there is there a motion to approve, approval of all the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And are there any other ordinance resolutions and motions this evening? Seeing none? Is there any public with business that would like to speak this evening? Seeing, seeing no one? Are there any reports of city officials? Is there a motion to adjourn?